Okay, I'd like to call this Committee of the Whole School Board Meeting Tuesday, January 26, 2021, to order. Ms. Robach, can we get a roll call, please? Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Present. Here.
Here.
Present.
I just wanted to announce we had an executive session related before the meeting from 6:00 to 6:40 related to possible employment and tax assessment. Also, I would like to acknowledge Administration's recommendation for William Tenet High School Assistant Principal, Mr. Kara Kappa. Wave, everybody, welcome. Yes. Hey. And... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Miller?
Yeah, I just wanted to commend Dr. Bedden, PSBA asked him to be on a panel this week with regard to school board service, and he did a commendable job.
On the request of the Administration, I would like to move that we make Agenda Item 3.2, we take that after Bedden's presentation tonight, so it'll be before new business. 3.2A, I'm sorry, specifically 3.2A, the audit presentation, that that be the first thing we do after Dr. Bedden's presentation.
Okay, so we need a second. Call in favor?
What, we don't vote on it?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Okay. Then... Okay, Dr. Bedden, presentation?
Before we get started, I did want to acknowledge that we are doing a phased approach with attendance in-person at board meetings. For those members who are here, we do know that this was a transition for you. If you're here to speak on an agenda item in a committee meeting, they would ask after the item if there's anyone here to speak on that item. If it's not on the agenda, you're more than welcome to speak in the section that's open to the public for any comment at the next meeting next month. Additionally, Madam President, board members, you would have received, as we are trending down in the county, and I want to publicly thank all of our teachers, staff, students, and community for their hard work in trying to adhere to the safety standards that has helped the PCR rate and incidence per 100,000 decline. With that, as we transition to the moderate phase, as previously planned by the high school administration, they sent out a communication announcing the ability for attendance by parents at the basketball games with a two-ticket allotment, as we wait to see that if we continue to hit the moderate phase dedication, excuse me, label by the State Department, which will allow us to allow in-person attendance for the parents of the players. I do want to give a heads up to all our faculty, staff, and community. You did get a communication on February 15th and a presentation on the 12th about what our transition plan is based on the current rating level. If we do get a rating level of moderate with a less than 100 incidence rate and below the PCR rate, again, below 10%, we will be planning to transition to the next level with elementary schools, at least four days in person, and then secondary still remain in a blended hybrid. So we are trending that way, but I just want to make sure that there's a heads up to everyone that was already presented previously, and if the trend keeps going down, that's what would happen next.
Dr. Bedden, just quickly, you said February 15th was the presentation. I assume you meant it was January?
On January, thank you. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
It was January 12th was the meeting, I believe, and the 15th was when we sent out a full-fledged update to the community about what instructional models we would be in. Thank you for... At this time, we would like to... Yes, I'm sorry, Ms.
So I think what you just said about elementary school going four days a week, that's probably big stuff for a lot of people. Would you just clarify what it's going to take? What exactly is it going to take for the elementary schools to go four days? Because there's parents at home clapping right now, and parents, and parents at home getting upset both ways.
As I rolled out into plan and based on the new information that we were seeing, the recommendations from the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Pennsylvania Department of Education, we rolled out, and it's online, just like we've done before, the metrics that we use to determine our transition.
So, Dr. Bedden, I'm not trying to be rude, because I totally get why you're, what you're saying. Can you explain it?
Yes.
Or, in layman's terms?
Right.
Because most people don't understand anything that, not anything, but most of what you're saying.
The recommendation that was given to us by the state, and then we tailor it to our local district needs, was that when we hit the moderate rating label, and that is incident rate per 100,000 or less, and a PCR rate of less than 10, and if we're also able to say that it have, which is a community transmission rate of moderate, that we're also able to successfully implement at least four out of the five mitigation strategies, and our staffing and operational capacity is still able to shift to that mode, elementary schools would be shifting to at least four days in person. Secondary schools would remain a blended hybrid model for that transition. And we would send this, I'd be sending this out again in writing anyway, to, but we know that we got the alert this week about the current PCR rate. Numbers are trending down. We thought it was helpful to make sure we give people a heads up that the rates are trending down. It could trigger a change in our instructional model.
And that way, school would be tied to those?
Yes. Yep. And again, that doesn't dismiss if we have case counts any time that require us to change instructional model based on too many cases in a particular school. This would just be the whole district instructional model shift.
So, and just to be clear, so that people understand, it's not going to be five days, so we can use that one day for cleaning, correct?
Well, we also align to keep all our schools on the same schedule, because we're also aligned with our virtual model on Wednesdays still.
So, right.
Just stay aligned with instructional for even the secondary students with MBIT and those types of...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Um, so, I'm not going to rehash my feelings on this, because I think it's well-known. My single question is, the full virtual model, for those who are not comfortable sending their kids back four days a week, that is still going to be a parent's, correct?
Not in the moderate.
Not in the moderate. So, the elementary school parents are going to have...
Yes.
So, is there an option that we could offer people? Because I don't think everybody's going to be comfortable sending their kids back four days a week.
The only way that you could do that is if we do some districts enforce commitment choice and to stay there, because we, teachers would need to know who is doing what. We can discuss it after the day with the team. I don't want to commit something without the logistics figured out, whether we can still do that model, the elementary four days. It is possible that we could offer that, but I need to make sure we talk to the instructional team and make sure whether the pros and cons of our ability to sustain that.
Because, I'm just asking, because if we get to the, if we get to the moderate level, and we say, okay, all elementary school kids have to come back four days a week, like, that's a, this is just my own opinion, it's a personal choice, and we're playing, we're playing roulette with other people's children.
We'll look at it.
And, and I think that, I think we have to give it parental choice.
I understand, we'll look at it, just give us a chance to look at it.
If it's at all possible, we could offer both solutions if you, you know, if you look into it.
Yep, we'll look at it. Yep, to make sure we can still sustain it.
Thank you, I didn't mean to open up a can of worms.
No, it's a valid question, and I just don't want to say we can do it, and I haven't looked at the team and the capacity to roll that out, so we'll look at it.
It's just easier for us to ask it here instead of fielding 50 phone calls on the way home tonight.
Yep.
Because people are going to, people are going to ask, and I, and I think there's going to be, I think there's going to be some on both sides, but...
I understand.
Personally, I, just personally, I have a hard time saying, listen, lady, your kid has to come back four days. I don't care if you're afraid.
It's a good question, and I understand. Yep.
My quick question, and maybe you said this and I missed it, and I understand also if you don't want to say it in, in this form. Is there a projected date at this point of going moderate?
Now, what happens is, once we hit the second week of moderate...
And we were moderate this week, is that correct?
We, we were, but we're not labeled. The state won't change it until two weeks of consecutive numbers becoming the moderate label.
I see.
So, once it triggers, that's why we saw it this week, we've started a planning process...
Right.
To try to make the transition, which we want to give notice also to our parents.
So, boiling it down to brass tacks, the earliest date that this would take place would be?
Uh, the earliest possible I would see it, probably be the first of the eighth.
Okay.
Whatever, I can't, is that the Monday?
Yeah, Mondays, February 1st and 8th are Mondays.
Yeah, be one of those two, depending on when we look at it as a team.
I do have a question in regards to the four days. Is the fifth day a cleaning day, or is there a reason why we couldn't go four, five days?
Again, we are trying to keep our schedule consistent across the district with our instructional program. Is there, we do cleaning every day already, so I wouldn't say that it's just for cleaning, but it does allow us, if we have a major issue, also to do an aggressive deep cleaning, I shouldn't say deep clean, that's, I stopped saying that, targeted increase disinfecting and cleaning, as opposed to our normal cleaning and disinfect flexibility, and try to cut down on how many days that were shut down by, by the school during, during closure for our case count. But we will take a look at the choice model for those who still want to stay home when we switch, all right? And definitely try to make sure that we get a response to you by the week. But, and this was to give people a heads up that data's trending that way, so it wouldn't be a surprise that it's coming. And the actual presentation, Mr....
January is a month and a time of year that we want to recognize and say thank you to our school board members. January is School Board Directors Appreciation Month. On behalf of the Administration, our faculty and staff, and our students, I want to take this opportunity to thank our school board members for their service to the Centennial School District.
Hi, School Board Members. I'm Logan Merits, the Student Government President at William Tenet. On behalf of the student body, I wanted to thank all of you for your service to our community. We are very fortunate to have such a devoted group of people at the forefront of our district. Your passion, leadership, and dedication has guided us through difficult times, especially this year, but we will continue to persevere with your guidance. We greatly appreciate your hard work and constant support for our district's families, our students, and most importantly, our education.
The support staff would like to say thank you and understands the magnitude of the situation in 2020 and beyond. You have been asked to do the impossible, and for what it's worth, we would like to take the opportunity to say we appreciate your time and dedication. Hats off to you.
I would like to take this opportunity to recognize the Board of School Directors for volunteering countless hours and a measurable amount of energy to make decisions that impact the students and members of the community. In your role, you serve as partners with parents, administration, faculty, and staff in the education of the students of Centennial School District. Your decisions impact the curriculum, the adults that work with the children, as well as the buildings that they are educated in. As we continue to navigate this pandemic, it is important to acknowledge the difficult decisions that you have had to make regarding the education of the students in our community. You may not always agree, but you have worked together to support a plan to continue the education of our students. Thank you for your service to the Centennial community.
Hello, my name is Krista DiPaolo, and I'm a Centennial parent. I have a daughter in 10th grade and a daughter in 7th grade at Law College. I wanted to take a moment of your time to share my gratitude for our current school board members, Mr. Birdnick, Mrs. Brancato, Mrs. Crossen, Mr. Dixon, Mrs. Islandberg, Mr. Godickson, Mr. Martin, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Panofsky. Thank you for your commitment to our Centennial community. Thank you for volunteering your time and talents to make this district a better one for our students, staff, and families. While I may not always agree with decisions made by the district, I am grateful that I have the opportunity to share my position and have it considered. I do feel that I can reach out to several of the board members with questions or concerns, and I always get a response. Their communication is always respectful and thoughtful. At the end of the day, our common goal is for the successful education of the children in our district. I feel my children are receiving an excellent education. In addition, the extracurricular activities the district provides have been a saving grace this current school year. Thank you for making the fall and winter high school and middle school sports programs continue within the current pandemic climate. And thank you for allowing spectators during the end of the fall season. In addition, the live streaming of sports was much appreciated and was above and beyond what was expected. I look forward to continued success for our district. Please continue to work for the good of the whole Centennial community. I am available to you all if there is anything I can do to help. Please know how much you are appreciated and valued by our school community. Thank you.
I took the opportunity to review some of the characteristics by the numbers that the Pennsylvania School Board Association gathers every four years about school board directors in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. There are about 4,500 school board members in the state. Seventy-seven percent of those spend anywhere from one to two hours pro-month. They're volunteering their time in this unpaid position. Part of the team of 10, they are characterized as being a collaborative group of people who are charged with working together to make decisions in the best interest of the students, staff, and faculty in a school district. Fifty percent of those who took the survey from PSBA in the last four-year cycle reported that they ran to give back to their community as a driving force for running for school board. A whopping 85% of those who responded said it was important to include equity into the school district programs and practices. Centennial School District wants to take this opportunity to say thank you to our Board of School Directors for your service. As Centennial School District, the 20 hours is more like the time spent by our school board members. So, thank you for your contribution and your service, and we look forward to continually working with you to make Centennial School District the best it can be. Thank you. So, on behalf of the Administration, the faculty and staff, and the community, we want to take this opportunity to say thank you. We provided you with a little thank you token of the bag that's in front of each of you all. Obviously, it doesn't come anywhere close to giving you compensation or what you probably deserve for your time and effort. So, I'd like to ask the team that's here, join me in saying thank you with a round of applause to our Board of School Directors. Thank you, Madam President.
I was saying, I would like to know from those 77% who say they spend one to two hours a month, how they manage that, because it's, one to two hours a month is a pipe dream, I think.
Well, it's not one to two hours during a pandemic, I can assure you that, and I thank you, that was very kind.
Very nice.
I, I would like to compliment the quality of the video production on that. It was, that looked very professional, the whole thing. Very impressed. Wow. The camera work, I'm serious, like, those are some nice cameras you've got, or something.
So, can I, I just want to say something. That was very, very nice. I am so uncomfortable with that, because really, we should be thanking all of you and all the parents and all the kids, because you guys have just rolled with the punches, you teachers, the administrators. I'm very uncomfortable with you saying thank you. We volunteered to do this. This is your livelihood and your lives. I'm not going to tell you it's a picnic, because boy, it is not a picnic, but thank you for all that you do. We got some great parents, and this has been tough stuff. I can't even imagine having all those kids home all day, every day. You love them dearly, but it's hard. For all of you, it's hard, and I just want to thank all of you.
We're moving on. We're going to do the Finance Committee presentation?
I'm here on the phone.
Oh, there you go. Mr. Birdnick, it's on you.
We have products on finance stuff, so I can see anyone recognize.
I hope you enjoyed the audio from the video.
We're doing the audit summary first, Mr. Birdnick.
3.2.
Somebody else needs to run the finance stuff, because they obviously can't see anyone directly.
Sure, 3.2 Finance Committee presentation.
Is, is the mic on to make sure that you hear him?
Can you hear? Is that good? Well, tonight, I'm going to make it real brief. I do this a couple of times a week with everything going on at all the school districts, you know? The least of their worries, it seems like, I was doing a Zoom meeting last night, and now I'm going through my little spiel and everything like that, and I get a text message, business, he's like, "Dry your plays over..." I pick it up a little bit, so I'm going to try to make it quick and, you know, hopefully I don't bore anybody, et cetera. So, I try to spice it up with cartoons here, but overall, I know Tom and his office, where you stand financially and where you ended up for the year ended June 30th, 2020. So, that being said, I'm just going to go ahead and be really, have a series of about five or six slides that'll be really quick, but obviously, the most important thing in the audit report is the independent auditor's report, and that's on pages one and two. What you're hiring us to do is give opinion on your financials. What it's doing is, the independent auditor's report, it's kind of outlining what management's responsibilities are, what our responsibilities are, what responsibility we're taking for the different sections of, you know, 70-page audit report that's in front of there tonight. But the most important thing is the opinion paragraph, which is in the middle of this slide and at the end of page one, I believe, I'm basically stating that you have an unmodified, clean opinion, the numbers that were presented to us by management, the year ended June This is a synopsis of what's on page 50. I think this is probably the most important statement in your financial statements. This is a summary. Page 50 kind of blows it out by revenue sources and by major function. This is just kind of a, you know, a high-level look at where your revenues expenditure and how you actually made out for the year ended June 30th, 2020. So, as you can see, up at the top, budgeted revenues were $125.5 million budgeted. It came in at $123.5 million, or negative variance about $2 million. Prior to tonight, we did meet with the Finance Committee, and we kind of went over the results here, and the one thing I highlighted here is, I deal with a lot of school districts, this is under budget. Now, over the past couple of years at Centennial, you've had some really good years with relation to revenues, especially related to local source revenues. Economy's been good, but one thing that this board has done over the past couple of years that I've noticed is, you haven't been aggressive with budgeting your revenues. Look at those local source revenues, and say, oh, we're still going to get this amount this year, but this board and management has always put together a budget that's always been conservative. So, even though you didn't meet your revenue goals by about $2 million, it could have been a lot worse if you were aggressive with those revenues, kind of conservative. Overall, $2 million, relation to $125 million, isn't bad at all. Expenditures, $125 million, .8 million budgeted, came in at $123.4 million for a positive variance, $2.4 million. This only makes sense, you know, even though you had to pay all your salaries, you had to pay all your benefits for all your employees, there were a lot of expenditures that you didn't incur because of the result of building closure. So, it kind of offsets those revenues being down. You remember, previous years, your revenues were over budget and your expenditures were over budgeted, so it's kind of the opposite. This year, that revenue shortfall was being offset by those expenditures that you didn't have to incur, primarily due to building closures, such as less subcosts. So, during the budget process for last year, you budgeted to use $500,000 of fund balance, and you only used $35,000 of fund balance. Not exactly how you planned it at the beginning of the year, but it all worked out at the end of the year, and that's a positive variance of $463,000 compared to what was budgeted, and you're still in the ballpark of the $10.7 million of fund balance that you're in. All right. Your general fund fund balance, Pennsylvania Department of Education allows you to have 8% of your next year's expenditure budget as unassigned fund balance. As you can see, your unassigned fund balance is at $8.2 million, which is within the $124 million budget that was budgeted for the 2000, for the, for the next budget year. And then also, you have a commitment for the retirement rate stabilization that the board has set in place. I have a slide on this in the future. The rate continues to go up, not as precipitously as it has been, but, you know, it is going up to save. I do, I would be, I did want to point out your food service fund. You do have your in-house food service fund here, and a lot of the school districts I deal with that have an in-house food service fund, had huge losses within their food service fund. Centennial School District has a track record of having a very positive food service fund in terms of, you know, having reserves available to be able to absorb any type of loss related to the pandemic. So, even though you weren't bringing in the revenues that you were bringing in the previous year, you still had reserves to be able to pay those salary benefits. At the end of the day, you did have a positive income operation related to June 30th, 2020. Like I was saying before, these different school districts transfer money over general funds, subsidize it, whereas your food service fund had sufficient capacity to pay last Capital Projects Fund, this is made up of two separate funds, you have your capital reserve that transfers over from the general fund, and then your capital projects, which is bond money that comes over spent for different capital projects. During the current year, there wasn't really that much going on really in relation to your capital project. I know you just borrowed some more money, you just pretty much had the wrap-up of the two energy-saving projects at the middle school for 2019, 2020. So, there's $340,000 left at the end of the year, and then in September, you had the new bond interest coming in, which replenished those amounts for the project. And here we're, is where we are with Caesar's net pension liability. As you can see, on the right-hand side, numbers are kind of leveling off, which is good, but at the same time, 35 cents on every dollar, isn't that cheap? You're getting reimbursed half the state, but, you know, what I should do, future here, this thing would get a little long in the, like, 2008, 2009, if you rolled that percentage back, 4.76, give it perspective of, hey, it was 4.76%, now it's 35. It really increased from 2008, 2009, 2006. Now, it's kind of leveled off, hopefully that's continued. Now it's kind of leveled off. Hope that's continued. On the certified amounts on the right-hand side that aren't certified yet, they have been coming in lower than what they've been anticipating, but um, at the end of the day, things are kind of leveling off there.
I don't expect an immediate answer on this. If you have to go back to us, it's fine. But the word I'm hearing with regard to Peasars is that with so many teachers retiring instead of facing pandemic directly, that, uh, Peasars could be looking at an escalated payout, uh, before it had been planned. If we were to face a higher percentage, how, how much can we absorb without really affecting our fund balance? And that 8 million were, we're still, we should be at 10 million in the fund balance with $124 million budget. And, you know, we're not there yet to wait.
Yeah, well, right now, you put aside the $2.5 million that could help you smooth. Um, yeah, I don't think, yes, what they're saying, I, I have heard the same thing, uh, et cetera, but they haven't done the new, I mean, this actuarial valuation that you're seeing here tonight, based on June 30th, 2019 number. So I think when we see the next actuarial valuation coming out, maybe we'll see some of that, seeing more of that in, in those numbers there, because this actuarial valuation is always on a one-year lag because they can't get the information fast to us, uh, no, fast enough. So if we're going to get a June 30th, 2020, we're never getting audited some old valuation. So, um, the impact that ensures, um, going ahead and hiring earlier than they anticipated in their other actuarial valuation might impact, you know, that liability for all. And then finally, you know, everybody wants to know what kind of audit report you had. You had a clean audit report. Talked about fund balance and the different funds, the general fund, food service, and the capital projects. And the final thing is, just as in previous years, the, uh, the district business office structure is such, um, that there's no internal control issues. There's adequate people within the business office available to implement internal, proper internal controls. And there's nothing that came up in our audit, audit findings or during our audit, that would rise to a finding we'll call significant efficiency or material weakness that would need to rise to the level that would need support. Oh, the last thing I want to note at the bottom is there's a lot of reporting that needs to be done, um, by the um, management related to, probably the biggest thing is the annual financial reports that file with big things, the business office. Also, their financial statements are posted to, uh, the Emma website for your bonds. And also, there's single audit, federal audit within nine months.
Let me just say, in, in this regard, this is all kudos to Tom Greenwood and his work, you know, in the business office. So thank you very much, Tom.
Are we going to go to 3.1? Or are you going to 2.1?
To, um, new business, be it resolved, since, anyone want to pull any? Uh, be it resolved, the Centennial, uh, District Board of School Direct, 3.1 approves the personnel agenda compensation to employ leaves of absence, change of status, regular additions, and.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Has the personal item of appointment, Madam Chair? Where's?
Somebody here to just.
Mr. Dixon? Here. On the personal item, uh, you submitted about the baseball coach. Uh, you will need to step to the mic. Please, uh, do not touch it. The staff will turn it on so that we are adhering to, uh, lack of transmission. Uh, please provide your name and address, uh, to the board, and you have three minutes.
David Dixon, 540 Buckstone Drive, Southampton, PA 18966. Um, I'm addressing the board today. First of all, thank you for your volunteer. I'm a volunteer as well. I've been in this township, Southampton, Upper Southampton, for 15 years coaching. And, um, very passionate about our student athletes. Um, and I'm concerned about what's going on with the selection of, namely today, the baseball coach. And how that's been selected, and I'm concerned about his qualifications. Um, and I think our kids deserve better. Uh, for example, our seniors now, this is going to be their third coach in the last four years. And obviously, the juniors, it's going to be their third coach in three years. There seems to be something wrong and a connection that's not happening with the selection of coaches and passing over uh, the coaches that have been dedicated, dedicated and qualified resumes to give a chance and not, I would say, just getting a job because of being a teacher. Um, and that's what I'm understanding is happening in this particular circumstance. I know that there are parents and students in our communities that are not happy with this situation. And they are not happy at all that it's not who they want. Part of them want it to be me. I'll be quite honest with you. And that's why I'm here tonight. I'm fighting for our kids. And I'm fighting for the parents that want you guys to make the right decision. Um, it's, it's unfortunate that this has to come down this way. I wasn't even interviewed. Uh, the first time I went for the job, when Mr. Higden resigned, I was interviewed, made it to the second round. And I didn't get the job. Okay? I told the athletic director that I'll be back in a year. Because I, I'm against. What's that?
30 seconds.
Right. I'm explaining to you guys that you need to do the right thing and understand that voting this guy in isn't what anybody wants, except for maybe administrator. And it's not the proper thing, and it's not right by these kids. This COVID thing, the baseball program is the only one that got affected by, by this. And these student athletes deserve the best possible experience that you guys can provide them. They don't want this coach. You guys have a big responsibility to do the right thing, and parents and the kids alone want you to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing your comments.
Madam, here you have is Ron Hasmark. Kevin Craft. Craftcheck. Again, when you give your name and address, and then I'll, uh, start the call.
Uh, Kevin Craftcheck, 365 Newtown Road, Ole Miss, PA. Um, just to piggyback off what Mr. Dixon just said there a little bit, um, it's come to my attention that nobody was even interviewed for this job, but it was just offered. And I don't know anywhere in America that that happens. And again, it's not fair to the kids and the families of this community. Um, this particular group of kids, the 2021, 22 graduates have been together since they've been eight years old. And, um, they've really put a lot of work and dedication. And collectively in the community, they've had one of the better community records in the last 15, 20 years. And they probably have a chance to compete for a league championship, which hasn't been done in this district in 30 years on the baseball field. And you guys are about to hire a coach who has no high school experience, and there were two other people that were way more qualified for the position. They weren't even offered an opportunity to interview, as Mr. Dixon just said. Um, I don't understand how that's right. I don't understand how you operate that way. Or how that's fair at all for these kids. Uh, so that's all I got.
Thank you.
Madam President, we have Chris Crawford. That's it.
Do you have any other comment? Well, can we do a roll call on this one, please?
So is this, so just to be clear, are we? How do you tell me where we're at?
Voting on the personality. Mr. Miller asked for, uh, was. So I'm assuming this.
So can we, can we vote separately on the baseball coach also?
Over.
We'd have to amend the motion that was originally made. That was us, but we certainly did that.
I can't hear you, Mr. Miller.
Ms. Robo, how, how would that, how would you recommend we do this? What do you suggest? Break that out, as in?
A board member can ask to bifurcate any motion, so all we're really doing is bifurcating the, the individual from the entire list.
So I recommend that we vote the, the step of less voice. Okay. That's voting on now.
Right, voice vote on the call package. A roll call on the individuals, if you like.
Well, I think on a roll call on the.
I would like a roll call on all three.
I'm not understanding what you're doing.
So first, we're going to do a roll call on just 2.1, and then we're going to separate it. We're going to do a roll call on, uh, vice principal, and then we're going to do a roll call on the, um, coach.
So 2.1, when we vote, is not including the principal or the coach? Okay.
Right, this, this vote right now is not including the, um, assistant principal and the coach.
Okay.
Okay, uh, ready for the roll call, Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Ms. Scotty?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
For Miller?
Yes. Yes.
Burdenek?
Yeah.
Brancato?
Yes. Yes.
Croson?
Yes.
900.
Then can we do the, um? Yes.
Okay, the question. Scotty?
Yes.
Mark?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Snoski?
Yes.
Mr. Burdenek?
Yeah.
Mrs. Brancato?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Islandberg?
Yes.
Croson?
Yes.
Okay.
Have to be the coach.
May I ask a question now, I'm chairman?
Absolutely.
All right. On the coach, the effective date is March 8th. This is January the 26th. What, what, this is the, what's going to happen between, assuming this may go forward, what's going to happen between January 26th and March 8th, since the individual can't do anything till March 8th, but he's not going to be employed?
Dr. Vesc, could you?
So March 8th is the official start of the spring season under PIAA guidelines. Prior to that, uh, the individual will be able to conduct voluntary offseason workouts as a volunteer.
My other last question would be, normally, if I was hiring a coach, be it baseball, football, basketball, swimming, anything, I, I would like to have a little information about what the record of the individual has been, where they've coached. Have they won games? Have they lost games? Uh, I, I have nothing against the individual on a recommendation. I have nothing against Mr. Dixon. I don't know, Mr. Dixon. I'm just curious, that normally, we would have some information to base our decision on, and other than a name, I have no information to say good, bad, or indifferent. So I, I feel that I'm going to have to abstain from this vote due to lack of information.
Well, I just know that I did receive some phone calls with some concerns, and I did reach out to, um, to verify the information as to, um, qualifications and, um, and I was given a list of qualifications that, that made sense. Um, so I had no reason to, um, not accept what, uh, administration had already had already looked into. So I don't really, uh, and, and if I may, we also had an opportunity to ask questions.
Ladies, let's be honest, there's not many of us at this table that know anything about baseball.
Honestly, and that's why I had to ask, because I, I don't know the first thing about it, so I did have to, I did have to reach out and ask.
And as a general rule, as a general rule, though, also, like, the school board doesn't get involved in hiring at this level. This is, it's not, it's not part of what a school board does, and so the administration handles pretty much hiring of all employees that are not at the cabinet level or above. That's the only time we kind of get involved in the hiring process. So I, I understand what Mr. Martin is saying. I'm not surprised that it's a name, because that's all we ever get for positions like that, because that's what school board members do.
And Mr. Snoski is right, yeah. That's the only, the only reason I reached out, because normally I wouldn't have anything to do with this, is because I was receiving complaints, and I wanted to make, make sure I was educated into what I was voting on. Mrs. Brancato? I did.
This is not a, a forum that you can conduct this way, uh, by the board policy and procedures. You're not supposed to go back and forth with audience, just yelling out comments. It'll make the meeting go into, uh, it's a business meeting, it's supposed to be conducted in public. Uh, you had a chance to speak, and I would encourage you that if you have some more concerns, uh, to, uh, take them up through the proper channel. And that's why you had the public opportunity to speak, to share your concerns. Board members are not supposed to go back and forth with the public in a meeting. That's what that opportunity was, to share your concerns, but then consider it.
So, so nor, so, so Mr. Craftcheck, Mr. Craftcheck, normally, the school board doesn't decide. We don't do the interviews for coaches. So what we get presented with is the candidate that they, that the person doing the interviewing, doing the hiring, has chosen. And then we can, we can approve it or not approve it, vote yes or no. I, I agree with Mr. Martin that I'm going to abstain also. Um, I don't feel comfortable. Ah, what's the word I'm looking for? I feel bad for everyone. I really do. I feel bad for everyone. Um.
And I, I do appreciate the comments. I really do. I just, please don't think that it wasn't looked at as, um, once I received a complaint, I did look into it, and I did get the, um, qualifications of all the candidates. So please don't. So please don't think that it was, we went into this blindly. We did look into it, and I, normally, the board would not have any part of this, have any part of this. We would rely on our administration. That is their, their job is to hire the candidate that they feel is the best. And we can either support it or, or not. But that's where, that's the point where we're at right now. So I would appreciate if we could do a roll call and, and get everyone's vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Pranowski.
I do want to respond to one comment that was made, and I just double-checked with Dr. Bedden. The CEA, which is the Education Association, their collective bargaining agreement is a public document, so I'm not giving out information. Part of that public document states that if there is a teacher employed by the district who is qualified to act as a coach, that preference is given to that candidate. That is what I was, that was a question that was asked, and that is a question that was also answered. So, and that's, that's something that predates most of the people on this board. That was not a decision we made. And so that, that is something that is a signed legal document. So there's issues on that end as well.
Any other questions? Ms. Roba?
Okay, Mr. Martin.
I will abstain, please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Pranowski.
Yes.
Mr. Birdnick.
No.
Mrs. Brancato. I'm going to abstain also. Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg.
Yes.
Mr. Godixon.
No.
Mrs. Crossen.
Yes.
Five, two noes, five yes, two noes, two abstentions.
I, I just want to state, the reason I am saying yes is because I'm going to trust the administration in their hiring process. That's their job, and, and that's what we pay them to do, the school district pays them to do. And going against the recommendations situation undermines their, their authority there. So I just want to clarify.
I, I wouldn't suggest.
Wait, are we raising hands? So, so I understand what you're saying, Mrs. Islandberg, but I also have to understand what the, what the community is saying also. We only interviewed one gentleman, and we did that, like Mr. Pranowski said, he gets preference because he is a teacher. So I think, so, so your, your hands are kind of tied. Maybe we need to, you know, to look at that next time we do collective bargaining, because...
Point of order, labor relations is an executive session item. We really shouldn't be discussing that.
Mr. Miller, I'm just trying to be, I'm just.
I understand what you're saying, Mrs. Brancato.
You don't need to yell at me, dude. You really don't, because I don't need it today. I don't. I'm not yelling at you. Don't yell at me.
Mr. Dixon is correct. We should not debate.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
Agreement right now.
I wasn't going to debate the whole agreement, Andrew.
All right. So, Mr. Dixon, did you have a question?
I, I would like to suggest that whether it's Mr. Dixon, and I, we don't spell our names the same way, so we're not related, it's nice to meet you, or anyone else, if a job opportunity does not work out the way you would like, probably the best strategy for being able to get into the business somewhere is not to show up at a public meeting and try to blow up the person who's being hired.
Well, Mr. Dixon.
That is not a very appropriate question.
I have no right to talk to that gentleman that way.
Are there any other questions?
I, I have a question.
Mr. Miller?
Have.
All right, Mr. Miller?
That's what just happened. You accepted him. I understand that, right?
All right, Mr. Miller?
That's what just happened. You accepted the guy. The wrong. Parents didn't want him, just accepted him.
Mr. Dixon, Mr. Dixon.
I don't mind you being in the meeting, and I am sorry that things didn't work out. All right, Mr. Miller?
Yes, have, have the assistant positions been filled?
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions regarding this?
He, he had to go ahead and step out. He had to go ahead and leave when we changed the order.
Be resolved at Centennial, so the district.
I would like 2.2.
We're taking it that way.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, I just wanted to ask a clarifying question.
She has to make the motion and second it.
What do you want me to do?
No, Shelley's going to read the motion.
All right, all right.
2.2 approves the accelerated 2021, 2022 budget opt-out resolution defining tax rate within inflation index as.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Brancato?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question, a clarifying question. On the second, on the sec, oh, holy moly, on the second, um, I'm sorry, on the second I'm so discombobulated. The, I, I just want to, if somebody, anybody would be good. Poor Mr. Greenwood, I'm looking at you. Does this, does, I want to clarify for the public, does this say that we are going to raise taxes 3%? Or that we can raise taxes 3%?
All right, well.
I'm not allowed to ask that?
No, you have to, that's what John, that's what Mr. Pranowski was going to comment.
The opt-out resolution says you cannot increase the real estate tax by more than the Act 1 index with 3%.
But that doesn't mean.
It's a ceiling. It does not say.
It doesn't say that's what we're doing.
It will be 3%. Nope, that'll happen as we go through our budget.
Okay.
Reviews in April and in May.
Okay, so this is just saying we can't go over 3%? Not that we are even doing the 3%, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to ask.
We did a similar, we had a similar process last week.
I just, I just wanted to ask a clar, because sometimes, um, people get confused.
Mr. Pranowski? So quickly, that's actually exactly what I was going to bring up, is that, because we did get at least one email, if not more, since I've checked, saying that at least Ms. Crossen, Mr. Birdnick, and I, I'm assuming it was a region two resident, got an email about this. Last year, I think the Act 1 was 2.6, is that correct? Yeah, so last year, the Act 1 index was 2.6. We passed the same resolution. The tax increase was 1.9%, which I believe was the second lowest in the last, over a decade. So this is, this is stating that as a board, we're committed to working within the guidelines the state gives us. We're working within our means. We're not going to go to the state saying we can't work within what you're telling us to work within. So that's all this is for everyone out there, as Ms. Brancato said, that's all this is.
Any further questions, or Mr. Miller?
Mr. Greenwood, it might be helpful to the board members if you could just explain the impact of the budget calendar and when we have to commit to certain things by certain dates.
Okay, there's.
Just a general, not, not specifics.
Sure, sure. There's a.
If I may, ask Mr. Miller, there's a calendar timeline in the presentation, so it, it is part of his presentation.
Fine, thank you.
Any additional questions?
We're good.
Ms. Roba, can we have a vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Miller. On the opt-out resolution, we're voting. Is that correct? You wanted a roll call on that? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pranowski?
Yes.
Mr. Birdnick?
Yeah.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Godixon?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
800, Mrs.
Presentation, Mr. Godixon?
Yes, good, good evening. We have one presentation tonight, 3.1's Status of Student Academic Performance, and Daniel, Mr. Gabriel.
Madam Chair, before we start, if I could just request, are we good with everyone clear to health and safety? Because I want to make sure Karen doesn't think she has to stay unless she wants to. Our nurse coordinator is here. Are we good with all of that? So at your leisure, I know that you're here to make sure that health and safety check passed. Thank you. I just didn't want her to sit here waiting.
All right, so thank you for this opportunity. We're going to take some time tonight to take a look at student academic performance in Centennial.
Madam Chairs, we prepare to share with you the current status of our student performance. We wanted to set the context and the framework for, for this presentation. As you can see in introduction, the instruction program touches on every student, parent, teacher, and administrator, and a school board member. It is the school district's primary contribution to society, the vehicle through which the schools prepare well-educated citizens who are capable of contributing to society locally, nationally, and globally. As you prepare to go into the budget conversations in, in season, and as part of, as you know, a typical entry plan, this is information that you would have gotten with COVID. A normal entry plan has been totally sidetracked, but we still thought it was important that we understand the main thing is the main thing, which is student performance, the student achievement, and make sure the board had some understanding of where we currently are in the realm of our student performance as you can sit, move towards your budget deliberations.
Thank you, Dr. Bedden. So there are many factors that go into the success of a program in a school district. What we're going to look at in the lens through which we're going to look tonight, especially from the lens of teaching and learning, learning and innovation, which our offices are, we kind of break this into four buckets, right? We look at curriculum, instruction, assessment, and system. When we talk about systems, we look at, you know, staff, scheduling, professional learning, how we tend to level students, a whole bunch of different factors that kind of go into the mix. So as we're sharing the data tonight for both achievement and growth, we're also then, on the back end of the conversation, going to be talking a lot about these four buckets, what areas we've seen that we've identified that are ripe for improvement, areas that have been going well, and then a plan of moving forward. So some other context and norms for considering this data, and norms are something that we do on a, on a regular basis in districted meetings, kind of help set the tone for, as we're, as we're talking through this data, and here are some things that you want to keep in mind. As always, we're keeping decisions in the best interest of our students' intellectual and personal, right? So we're using the data to help make those decisions. We want to focus our decisions on fact, not on interpretation or assumptions. So we, we are trying to move more towards being a data-driven decision-maker here in Centennial. You know, history and nostalgia can be dangerous when we talk about programming, especially in education. So we're, we're going to try to focus on what are the facts telling us, and then how can we make better decisions off of those, off of those facts? What we talk about a lot in these data meetings that we have, what staff is, do not take or make conversations or decisions personally, right? As I said earlier, this is a system. There's a lot of things at play, right? From resources, people, leadership, the culture, a whole lot of different things that go into the success of programming. I think in terms of ROI, and, you know, you've heard me talk about it a lot in our board updates on a week, right? We're looking from both a return on investment lens, calls, or return on instruction, what we're buying and what we're paying for, or are we getting give back to that, right? Is it actually turning into staff, students moving forward with, with our education? We believe in supporting our teachers, who research over and over has said is, is the most essential resource we have. And then for clarity for tonight's purpose, right, we're going to be looking at two types of data. We're going to be looking at achievement data and growth. Achievement data, there's a lot of other factors outside of our control as a district that play into achieving, right? Socioeconomics, demographics, things of that nature. So when we're talking about achievement, we're really using that as a measurement for our systemic programming as a whole. We might look at one grade level's achievement, you know, maybe let's just take a random grade, 11th grade, but we know that how those students are doing there is a testament to sort of the system from A to 11th grade, right? To see if we're really aligned throughout the whole system. Whereas when we look at the growth data, that's really, a really good reflection of that year, that classroom, that teacher, and the impact they're having at that moment with those students, beating them at point A and moving them forward, right? And that will differ year to year, depending on what level of achievement kids, you know, are, coming in, what level those students are at. And then lastly, we want to remain future-focused on continuous improvement and growth in, in these areas, in our systems, curriculum, and structure. So I'm going to give you just sort of an overview of the data you're going to see on the next number of slides. We have three data points. The top two data points are going to be related to our achievement. The percentages you're going to see are our percent of students meeting or exceeding proficiency on both the 2019 PSSAs and 2019. Obviously, we didn't have state testing last year, so we've got to use the data, the most recent data we have, two springs ago. And I, you know, it's, it's two springs ago, but it's still, as you'll see later in the presentation, has really had an impact in forming what we've done from 2018, 19, to last year to today. We have the benefit, so thank you to the board, for Forecast 5 Analytics was software that we purchased this year, which allows us to look at the data the way we're going to look at it in the next couple of slides, which we haven't had the capability of for, and had over research. So the other piece to this is because demographics play a role in achievement, to just look at ourselves on the left in Bucks County would be unfair, right? To just look at us there, because there's other districts that are larger, you know, different tax base, right? There's other, other factors that come into play. So what we did with kind of research on the right is we ran what's called a peer group task. So we took the top 20 schools in Pennsylvania that are most like us, based off the following factors, enrollment, percent minority, percent English language learners, percent special ed, percent children in poverty, immediate household. We came up with 20 schools. We pared it down to us and nine others, and the nine we picked were from Bucks, Montgomery, Delaware, and Chester County, just more local south Pennsylvania. Some of the schools were out, you know, Lancaster and Harrisburg and that area. We felt we wanted to keep the comparison local. And I'll explain sort of the numbers on that when we get, so you're going to see us, where we fall in the county. And, and just as a side note, three of the schools in our county are actually peers, only three out of the 13 or so. Then you're going to see on the right, a list of 10 of what would be considered more appropriate comparisons in our peer group. And then at the bottom, you're going to see the PIVAS data, which is Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment System. This is the growth measure, right? And what you'll see is a color. You'll see green is one year's of academic growth, meeting the standard. Light blue is moderate evidence that we exceeded that standard. Dark blue is significant evidence that we've exceeded that standard. Yellow is moderate evidence that we did not meet the standard, and red is significant evidence that we did not. So in an ideal world, when you're looking at growth, you're looking at green and up, right? So the algebra one key started at the high school, just to kind of review a little bit. On the left, you can see where we fall ranked in the county, right? As I mentioned, Neshamoney, Quakertown, and Pen Ridge have little asterisks next to them, so those are considered our peer groups. Okay? So that's where we scored in the county. On the right-hand side is where we scored ranked in our peer group. The numbers within the peer group rankings in parentheses are how close in rank to us those schools are. For example, if we were the marker for, you know, who we're looking for in a peer group, closest on that list is Sartor. They're third closest to us in terms of those factors I mentioned earlier, and poverty, English language learners, household income. The farthest in the group from us is Pen Ridge. They're about 19 in terms of how close of a peer group. They're still all part of the top 20, but, you know, that's, that just shows you sort of the, the range of how close or far they are from us. So that's where we fall in that. Now, as I mentioned before, those are achievement, achievement measures, right? That's a, a, it's an outcome of the system as a whole, right? A to 12. Whereas when you look at the growth, we're green. That's a, that's huge positive, because that's a testament to the teaching, the teachers in the class, right? They're getting kids wherever they're coming in, high, middle, low, and they're growing them a year, right? And so I think, I just wanted to really walk you slowly through the first slide, because you're going to see a lot of slides with similar breakdown, and I want to make sure And I want to make sure that you're understanding what you're seeing. So the top two are the achievement, kind of holistic programming around some of our things are, are, are programming. And then green is the growth, so testament to the teaching, the classroom. You know, as we've been starting to dive into things a little bit, this is our literature at the high school. You know, looking at the, the red growth here, we started doing some digging, as you guys know, last year. We did put a K-12 ELA task force together to look at curriculum and resources, and we did uncover that. We have resources in our ninth and 10th grade curriculum that aren't really aligned at some level to some of the standards and the assessments that we need. That's an area we're going to start working on moving into next year. So the Bio Keystone, again, the rankings there, you see their dark blue growth, and that's been very consistent over time. As I've learned since I've been here the past year and a half, is that they're consistently growing at a very high rate in biology. This next chart is a three-year trend of achievement. So if you just focus on the yellow, that's, that's us. So if you look at the first line there, Algebra One in 2017, our achievement of percent meeting or exceeding proficiency was just under 40%. Following year, it looked like it was shading over, and then last year, two years ago, it fell way down. What you'd like to see is a more consistent line of groups lining up with where they fall with achievement. Again, systemic programming, K-12, right? And if you look back to the colors in terms of the growth, you know, the fact that we have teachers will look at biology, getting kids, you know, at this, you know, middle rate, higher rate, lower rate, and no matter what, they're growing them, the real testament to the work that they're doing in the classroom. So, you know, this is more showing that we're getting high groups of kids, middle groups of kids, low groups of kids, right? Up at the high school. The question, the conversation is what are we doing or not doing systemically to try to move kids earlier to get them all up to a, a more level playing field when it comes to achieving? So here's a grade math PSA. Again, you can see where we fall in terms of ranking, both in the county as well as our peer group, dark blue growth. Really good, right? Our teaching. Seventh grade math PSA, rankings there, dark blue growth, right? So we've got a lot of bright spots here. Grade six math PSA, and you're going to see across the state, sixth grade's a tough, tough year, generally speaking, in, in most districts. There's a lot of transition, you know, we've got kids coming from multiple elementarys, two, two different middle schools. That is an area that we're going to look at in terms of, you know, trying to get to the root of why are kids having a tough time? There's the social emotional stuff going on at that point in their lives and those sorts of, excuse me, those sorts of things. Then right back to the PSA for English for grade eight, again, you see where we rank from an achievement perspective, big picture programming. Whereas we're, you know, growth is dark blue. Same thing for grade seven, very similar to the math is the grade six. So that's definitely an area we're going to be looking at. Similarly, if you follow the English trend over three years, it's been a little bit more static, a little bit more steady in terms of the achievement. You know, one of the things we can look to is say, you know, we've, we've had a consistent resource in the reading. World of Reading, English Language Arts, maybe it's not the top, but it's consistent. And we've had it consistent for a number of years. So kids are getting multiple years of the same types of instruction through this resource with a consistent philosophy and a consistent pedagogy, which could lead to some of that. Whereas, you know, you look at math, similar to the high school and the others, it's a little bit all over the place. You know, we haven't made any secret since I've gotten here about, you know, the, the variety of mathematics programs that we've had in the district and elementary. And I think you're going to see that in the data as well, you know, that we've, we've been wrestling with about three to four different programs over three to four years. And actually, one of the programs that we had wasn't actually aligned to the newer standards and the newer assessments, so that's been a struggle, which we corrected last year, and we have gone all in this year with, you know, Eureka Math, which I shared with you all at the end of last year. I've put PD plan in place and those sorts of things. I'll get more specifically into that later, but just, you know, trying to contextualize this for everybody. So here's our grade five math. As you can imagine, both, both, this math's been a struggle for us in the elementary. And they don't have growth data in third grade because there's no prior testing. Whereas our English scores have been dark blue. From a growth perspective, dark blue, then again, we don't track in third grade. Similarly, our English achievement has been relatively stable, whereas our math has been a little bit all over the place. Again, you know, I think we all know the big challenge we've had there with the multiple pilots over multiple years. Kids restarting each year in a new program with a new scope and sequence of philosophy. So areas for improvement, five areas for improvement related to academic growth, right? I think two, you know, are symptom largely of the math issue we had talked about over and over. Two are that sixth grade transition, so that is something we're going to be looking into this year. One of the systems we're putting in place is Dr. Best is helping to lead a committee for possibly looking at revamping the middle schedules over the next year or so. And so obviously, taking into account social emotional needs of students in this transition will be part of that conversation. And then, as I mentioned earlier, one of the areas that we're struggling with was a misalignment of resources, which we can easily correct moving forward in our, in our high school. And then we have eight areas of strength, you know, and I think going back to the conversation around when we talk growth, we talk teaching, right? And that's a real testament to what our teachers are doing and the work they're doing with the kids, no matter where they're getting them, they're getting them and they're moving them. They're, they're helping them grow when we build the right systems and supports around it. So current opportunities for change and improvement, right? So big buckets here are back to the four from the intro, curriculum, instruction, assessment, and system. So one of the areas we need to revisit is, you know, looking at our curriculum alignment, the current resource, research, excuse me, as well as the standard. You know, it was no secret when I got here that the new standards came and went a couple of years back. The new assessments came and went a couple of years back, and we had not made that adjustment at that time, which is when we saw a big dip in our overall. So then there was a kind of frantic feverish sprint to get everything aligned, which happened, and now we're kind of going back through and, you know, revisiting, reviewing, iterating, revising as needed to help, help get that back into place. K-12 resources aligned to current research, and I'll say consistent and implementation. So the resources aligned to research in the standards as well as consistent use and implementation is an area that we're really looking at. You know, looking back over history, talking to folks, you know, we would have years where we would bring in, you know, somebody would go to a training on this reading theory, and somebody else would go on this reading theory, and then we'd buy, you know, these two different resources, both of which, you know, are set to address the skill, but very different pedagogic and philosophic, right? So it's, it's, you know, taking instead of an apple and an apple getting together to move forward, you have an apple and orange banging heads trying to help kids read, let's say. So, so that's something we're looking at, is really making sure that we're vetting and using, you know, really looking at the resources from the lens of what do we want as outcomes for our kids? Is this aligned to the most recent research? What direction do we want to go? And AIM, AIM Academy Professional Development, we'll see again later, you know, has really been helping us with making some of those decisions around reading and English language art. Instruction, again, consistent overall research-informed instructional focus, kind of back to the resources. It was, you know, we're going to check this out, we'll check this out, we went to this training, we did that training. It was a lot of, a lot of variety, which variety's not bad, but when we're lacking that overall structure and vision, you know, we, we tend to put too much into the pot and it gets a little bit muddy. Personalized, content-specific, and need-based professional development, you know, one of the, and thank you again for the frontline purchase at the last board meeting. One of the outcomes of that purchase is we will be able to identify specific ED needs for our teachers. And really personalize and hone in for them, you know, areas that, that we're going to need to, to work on, to either strengthen and/or bolster. And then focused professional development aligns to our overall district, right? And going back to, again, some of the data that we were able to pull from frontline, is kind of figuring out, you know, what direction are we going based off a comprehensive plan and the goals outlined? And is all of our money, resources, time, and energy put towards developing our teachers focused on those goals? Assessments, very similar to the curriculum, you know, having consistent research-informed curriculum-based assessments. I think talking to the team, we had gone through three iterations in three straight years of assessments, which again, you know, consistency is a good thing, inconsistency is not. And I think we've been a victim of that for some time. K to six rotating assessments and intervention tools, kind of similar to the curriculum. And then systems, I mentioned the research-based middle school scheduling process, you know, looking at a multi-year curriculum development process, bringing open education resources into the conversation, looking at online course development, which was something we started last year as part of the work over the summer with, you know, obviously COVID hitting. Culture stability for administration, it is an important systems piece that I know Dr. Madden has talked a lot about, and we've talked a lot about that on the next slide. And then the use of federal grant. We've been doing a big, big dive into the budget this year, and especially, you know, Mr. Greenwood and I, and Mr. Rutz have been looking really closely at how are we using our, our federal monies for both staffing, for professional development, and those sorts of things. And again, going back to what are our goals, what is the data telling us our needs are, and are we putting all of our resources towards those needs? So, you know, high turnover, and, and there's a blurb on the, the bottom of this slide, or, you know, from the Brookings Institute out of Brown. You know, every time you transition, an administrator specifically talk about school, you're, you're at a three-year reset, right? So, you know, you can have somebody in a position for one or two years, you bring somebody else new in, and you're sort of starting over, and you're losing three years worth of, of achievement and growth. So, you know, I think one of the challenges we faced, you know, looking back and, and over the years here, is we've had a lot of turnover in leadership. And that goes back to that stability. When you, when you ask, well, why do we have four different, you know, math programs in four years? Why did we have all these different initiatives in and out? I think a lot of it comes back to this. And it's something that we're looking at in terms of moving forward, trying to create a sense of stability within the admin so that, you know, the longer we're here, the more we can see these through as multi-year initiatives, and they really take time to get into the teacher's hands, get the multi-years of professional development, you know, and really give the kids time to fall into a program and move forward and, and see that achievement hopefully systemically grow as time goes on. So what has been going on in the curriculum world since, you know, we just went back to 2018, 19, because this data was from right around that year. So this, this predates me some of this, which is a testament to the team that's been here. So, you know, up until about 2018, 19, we started to make some moves with our middle school science program, our middle and high school math program. We brought Newzella, which is a resource in for nonfiction reading to help support grades three to 12, and then nine to 12. Had been adding courses to their course selection guide and the course catalog to build out with the, went alongside their new schedule. You look at last year, again, we went full implementation for the science, full implementation for the math, second year of implementation for Newzella, which is the one resource, and then again, continue to add courses at the high school. This year, you're talking year two of the full implementation for science, or two of full implementation for math, year three of Newzella. And the reason I'm showing you this is because I, you know, we just preach the importance of stability and consistency over time, right? So, you know, what I'm trying to show is, and you'll see this in the slides, is how many things have been put in place and we've pared down, and we're kind of, we're following the same initiatives through now with follow-up, with further professional development, right, and things of that nature, giving not only our teachers time to live in it for longer, but our students as well. And then if you can look at this year, we've also added the course design elements, which is something we started over the summer to help prepare for the hybrid environment we're in. Implementing year one of Eureka, full implementation along with professional development with the University of Pennsylvania to go along with that, as well as adding courses for our high school. Instructional improvement focus, we started year one prior to me getting here in 2018, 19. The team decided to bring the Collins Writing Program into the district to help our writing instruction. And you can follow, we went year one, year two, we're now in year three of Collins, again, going further, going deeper, and building depth there. We started some work, again, maybe even before 2018, 19, but with University of Penn's, University of Penn's literacy network. We did two years of selective coursework, offering courses to teachers throughout the district. This year, we use them as the mainstay for our math implementation of Eureka in K to five. Every K to five math teacher has been getting workshops as well as coaching throughout the year, which I've mentioned in my board update, with Eureka Math, the underlay, and their training has really been trying to integrate literacy strategies in with the math, because a lot of our math are heavily based in literacy. And again, we're into, you know, year one, full on, last year of the math instructional process development with CPM. We have a multi-year contract with them, so paralleling the implementation of the actual CPM math program. We've got a three-stage, not necessarily a three-year, it could be longer, but it's a three-stage rollout of PD. Them, and then we started, as you guys know, AIM Institute for grades K to five, professional learning on the science of reading, year one was last year with a cohort. That cohort is now moved on to first cohort, not all of them, but most of them have moved on to second course. And then we're into our second cohort this year, up to eighth grade, on getting folks trained up with the science of reading through AIM. The plan for next year will be to kind of round out K to three. So by the end of next year, we'll have had all of our K to five, plus a good number of middle school, and hopefully eventually up to high school, teachers of reading and special ed that deal with students with reading challenges that will have been going through AIM, at least the first, at least the first course, base course, which is the pathways for reading. There are two courses beyond that that we're offering as well, that some people are taking advantage of. There's a pathways to structured literacy as well as a pathways to writing, which we'll get into next year. The leaders also, almost all of us last summer, building principal, central admin, did take the pathways to leadership course through AIM. So we started talking not from a, how do you teach a kid how to read, necessarily the level we learned that, but our application was, so what resources should you be buying? How should you build out your curriculum, right? What types of assessments should you be using? And right off the bat, we made a lot of changes last summer, really, oh, this doesn't really make sense, right? So it kind of goes back to us being more informed about if we're going to go down this road and buy into the science and the research. What should we be then doing systemically, back to that conversation, around helping our teachers and then helping our students improve with, with reading? Assessment improvement efforts, you know, we, two years ago, have implemented math testing. This stands for the Measures of Academic Progress. We went year one, year two, we're now in year three. We also brought in a resource called iXL, Diagnostic Assessment Tool. We're in year three of that. We also, again, in conversation with AIM, had added ESGI, it's an assessment implementation software. It stands for educational software for guiding instruction. And then this year, we added in Dibbles back in the mix, which is a dynamic indicators of basic early literacy. Again, that was a tool that we, I guess, had at one point. It went away when we started looking at science and talked with, you know, collectively with teachers and admin and AIM, and they were like, that's one that you want to bring back and get rid of some other ones that you're using that aren't really that effective. So that's where we are now, and then we are going to be rolling out very soon, we had a demo done about a week ago with our new data warehouse, with who knew it? So again, having a lot of this data at a really, you know, quick click of the finger will make these conversations easier. I mean, the fact that we now have foresight analytics and that we have kind of a research, we were able to pull a lot of this together, which we didn't have that ability in the past, at least not in this way. Who knew it's going to help to further that as we go? Lastly, it's two slides for systems improvement. We did years ago implement MTSS program in our elementary schools, a middle, multiple support. 2018, 19 was year three of that. We did move the high school, moved new schedule in year one and 19. So we are, last year was year four of MTSS, as you'll see on the next slide, this is year five. We're into year two, then three of the high school schedule. We got math work grouped together last year, the reading English Language Arts Task Course last year. We started to work with a consistent district-wide data protocol, data protocol, excuse me, last year, which we're going to continue into this year. We have the instructional coaches, which is our huge value add. Last year was year one for them. The, again, we had mentioned the curriculum course development process, and then upgrades the district infrastructure, focus on a reliable, safe, stable technology ecosystem. I did put this in my board update, when the IU's internet went down about a week ago, we were able to very quickly, it was, it was intermittent. So we got some reports early in the day, we called the tech team, within a half hour, we had switched over to our own backup, which we had all approved last year, so thank you. And while the internet was a little bit slower than we would have liked, it was at least stable. We weren't dealing with relying on the IU and, and the issues they were having there, and then once they got fixed, we were able to move right back over to their system. So very little interruption, so to speak, of, of instruction. That's not something we would have been able to do two years ago. We would have been at the mercy of what was happening, you know, if you remember the issue where the mouse chewed through a wire in the ground about a year ago, and we were without internet for a day or so. So thank you again to the board for allowing us to do that work with instruction. And you can read this on your own, but you'll see it's a lot of just continuous year two, year three of a lot of different systems. I did mention the middle school scheduling committee. We are full one, we are full one to one this year. It woke everybody up. As you've been reading, and Mr. Podolsky and Mr. Goddardson have been involved, we do have a district calendar committee because time is an important factor in all this, right? Is, is length and consistency of instructional time for students. So the calendar is something we're looking at, and then obviously, as I mentioned, the different polls that we've been able to get for, for helping to pull some of this data. And then again, you know, the central admin reorg that we've been going through for helping to get some stability going. So what's next? going. So, what's next for us as a team, instructional leadership team across the board? Establishing foundations for strategic planning, going back to our comprehensive plan, you know, as Dr. Bennett had mentioned, really looking at our mission, vision work, tying them to the district goals laid out in our plan, further address the topics and themes that came out of the University of Pennsylvania's equity audit that we had done a few years ago. So, that'll be continued work as we move forward. Continued implementation, evaluation, and evolution of all these efforts, right? Like, really taking a hard look at, is this working and do we know? Can we say it's working based off of achievement and growth and other data that we're pulling in, that we'll now have easier access to with some of the new systems that, you know, we've been starting to put in place for the past three years? What we'd like to do towards the end of the year, once we have it, is come back with an analysis of local data. You know, we don't have PSSAs in Keystone from last year because of the pandemic. Now, we'll see what happens this spring. We actually didn't even get to finish all of our local tests last year. We had a lot of our fall benchmarks and winter benchmarks, and then spring got thrown out the window. So, as we get further into this year, come back and kind of show how our kids have been doing and growing since at least this year with our, some of our local assessments. From a special ed perspective, really taking a look at the need for compensatory ed, you know, coming out of the pandemic. But we also have been working with Hanover on getting us a learning loss indicator to find out how much of a learning loss that the pandemic and shutting down last spring and then the miles we have this year is really helping students. So, when we get that data, we'll be able to share that as well. And then, one of the tasks that Dr. Bennett has put forth is really looking at exploring and planning for a full-time cyber school office, right? What we have in place now works for what it was put in place for, but with, you know, the pandemic and the growing need now, you know, getting something that's more homegrown, more built-in, right? And run by our own staff is really what we're hoping to do moving forward. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Bettin to wrap this up.
I know that was a lot, but it's, for me, it's the main thing. And I hope that, I know that when we shared this with a lot of subgroups, of teachers and others, they were excited about the opportunity that we're really getting a chance to go back and talk about student performance and how we're doing. But we also think it's very important that when we talk about the budget, people need to understand, well, what are you doing with the money? And what are you going to get for? And how are you going to get better, to get better outcomes? And we thought that was important, laid a foundation on it. You know, when you look at the last slide that was up there with regards to reflection, again, connecting it to the board, you know, is that we believe that it was important to share this current status of the student performance as a baseline, connect it to the budget process also, because taxpayers need to understand what are they paying for. And then, you know, the school district budget is based upon past performance, but is also, can provide as a tool for planning the educational future of our school district. So, you have to understand how we're doing to plan educational future. And again, that's really a summation of the reflection for what you just received as we lead into the first kickoff of the budget process. Again, you know, we had inundated, especially because of COVID, with a lot of operational stuff. We really haven't spent a lot of time being able to talk about how we're going to make sure we have a steady, what should be really a diagonal line sloped, showing continuous improvement year after year versus what looked like a arrow pointing where you started one place, got better, then you fell back. And that's our goal ultimately in the process, is to build systems to show that we can have continuous improvement and actually be able to set performance targets and try to reach there so that people can say, we're getting a high-quality education that really is about college and readiness, because it is not my job to tell someone to go to college or not to go to college. But it is our job to build a system that they can actually choose which way they want to go when they leave Centennial School District. So, at that point, I'm chair, if anyone has any questions for any of us.
Anybody have a question?
Sure. My takeaway, you know, from the presentation, among other things, obviously, you commented on some of the stability issues that we've had. And obviously, I think this board has taken a lot of action to try to address that by, you know, identifying talented people, getting them into places that we think that they can stay, and being aggressive about keeping them there, you know, now that, as much as possible, and putting a team in place that we hope is going to, to be constructed the way it is for as long as possible. I also took away from the presentation, you talked about the curriculum changes and deciding how, you know, using the most current research to decide what direction, you know, to take curriculum in the various, obviously, in math and literacy, in literacy instruction and sciences. My question is, and this is really more just a broad philosophical question, and perhaps there's even a difference of opinion amongst yourselves, but how is the administration currently taking, because to me, like, there's a question of, do we want to, it sounded to me like there's an emphasis on what does the current research say? But as much as current research is valuable, to me, the most important thing is to basically pick a plan and stick with it. So, whether, you know, you're using the thing that was just researched yesterday, and is the most cutting-edge, wonderful thing in the universe? Well, we know sometimes those things wind up turning out not to be so great. The question is, are you comfortable with what you're, you know, with every place you're landing, and you think it's something that's sustainable for multiple years, so that not just, there's not just a turnover in the personnel, but there's also not a turnover in what the personnel is doing, if that makes sense?
Yes. And I'll say why, for two reasons. One, none of the research that we're pulling in is new, right? It's, it's been around for a long time. The science of reading and, you know, the pen literacy has been around since the 50s, you know, so there's
Then why did I never learn to read?
Some of these things are tried and true. They've been updated. They've evolved. You know, I think one thing we look at is, organizations we pull in is, have they been around for a long time? And have they evolved? Right? Have they embraced technology? Have they embraced some of the, you know, you know, new demands that are coming out? And the other reason I say that is, you know, and it wasn't really clear here, but a lot of what we're doing is reallocating money back to our training, our teacher, right? And, and they are the most impactful, most important, you know, resource we have in the district on our students' academic and personal growth. And the more we can do to help make them, lack of a better phrase, administrative proof, right? Leadership proof, the better, right? And so, because, you know, they're the ones that are going to be around for the longest, right? And so I think having them be the ones to be the decision-maker, to understand why we're doing what we're doing, right? And be able to make those arguments moving forward. And again, as the achievement and the growth will eventually show, it'll be a hard argument to change for.
Right. And just to reformulate the question slightly and just to follow up. So, I mean, I'm asking, are you guys comfortable with the, the directions you've decided to take in the various curriculum areas? And I guess just as importantly, do you feel, or, I mean, I wish there were perhaps faculty members here, but is, are you, is your sense that like, that the teachers, that, you know, the people who will be actually delivering the curriculum are also comfortable and feel bought into the directions that are being selected by this team at this time?
A hundred percent buy-in's always hard. But we do, we have had committees and work groups and task forces together to help make some of these decisions. So, yes, I'm confident that, you know, we are all, as we're learning more, all of us, you know, I think it's a shared journey right now. So, the more we're all learning, the more we're getting deeper into this, you know, I am confident.
I didn't mean that you need a hundred percent buy-in, but more that, that there is, like, there is an invitation to those folks into the process as much as possible that they have that ability.
Yes. They're a part of the process.
Mr. Miller?
This is a really ambitious and well-thought-out plan, and something the district has needed for a long time. And as you point out, a lot of these options have been available for some time, but we haven't employed them. I don't have any questions about the plan. My question right now is, we've been promising our stakeholders for that long time that we were going to deliver something, and I think this really is going to be it. It takes a long time to turn a ship like this around. How can we add a marketing plan to this so that we at our stakeholders know what we're going to do, assuming it's approved, how we're going to do it, and how long it's going to take, and what benchmarks they'll see as we go along, so we can keep them invested into the success of this program?
I'm so glad you asked. I'm blown away. I am so glad you asked. And I would just say that you, we didn't go in specific with it, but one of the things that we would encourage you to do is take the opportunity to look at Future Ready Index. And one, early on, I've had a conversation with the board about one, getting a mission and a vision statement updated to meet the tenets of what you hear outlined by the School Board Association of what a true mission, vision looks like, and then establish goals. One of the reasons we're also, as a team, talking about looking at Future Ready, Future Ready is driven to a goal of hitting certain standards by 2030. So, as a team, we're talking about building that as a platform for the metrics to be able to report out to the public, what is our progress towards that, and how are we moving towards to make sure we're at or exceeding those goals outlined by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, where students should be performing in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The good news about that tool, too, is you can show it not only for the district, but also our district in relative to other school districts, our district, meaning the schools within the district. So, it is a public-facing tool that's already there, that doesn't have to be rebuilt. So, that's something that is a public-facing tool that we're going to be planning on incorporating to set metrics and performance goals to the board and to the community, to try to show progress. Because again, it's about continuous improvement and progress and growth that we're talking about. Then, of course, you have the T-Boss that's already there. So, we'll be building that agreement of, here's what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I don't want you to have to carry the weight for the things your predecessors haven't done. We have a brand-new team here. Everything's in place. Let's, let's make sure it's successful.
Thank you, Mr. Podolsky. My question is very, on that list of, that you had of different numbers, is that including people who are generally Dr. Seidenberger?
Any transition, so including interim.
Okay, that was just my question.
Because there's still been a period of
Right, right. I got it.
Right.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
You.
Would it be possible to pause for a minute, have our members come up and ask questions so they're not here all night?
Yeah, there was one person who indicated they had a question about the tax increase, which would relate to the budget item. I don't know if they feel like they got the answer to that question.
I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but I don't want you to sit there all night. I feel bad.
I'll make this brief. Good evening, School Board members and Centennial District administrators. My name's Carrie Sellers of 593 New Road. First, let me say that I stand here as one, but I am of many parents that have growing concerns regarding the future and quality of our children's education now and moving forward. I understand, as Dr. Bettin has instructed me, that I am only allowed to speak on topics in reference to the agenda, so I will make this very quick in reference to that. So, I understand that Dr. Bettin had talked about the stages going forward for our elementary students. However, many of our students or children are failing classes, suffering from depression, and having anxiety and behavioral issues. The school does not just provide education, but also social skills that they can learn to function in a society as they venture out into the real world. How can we expect our, their generation to thrive and eliminate the current issues in society if we continue to isolate them from one another? Basically, is the main, children, I think, are mostly affected, and what I'm hearing from parents, are the middle schools and the high school students. So, what plan do we have going forward to get them back into school as opposed to a hybrid program? And when can we expect that? The section issue, and I'll make this again very brief, is in reference to the taxes. I understand that we are, you will not be ruling on the tax increase of 3% at this point, but it's a state allotment. I am asking that the board, instead of putting that on struggling families in the district community, that maybe while you, when you do do your budget, if you could trim the fat administratively, as opposed to putting on us taxpayers. Also, is there a way that the public budget would be able to be posted publicly for us tax members and communities to know where that money's going? So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
The budget is, is published, Mr. Greenwood, but you, you could give her guidance on where to find it. And for the rest of the questions, could we get her information and give her the, get her the response she had wanted? Okay, we have your information for the rest of it, to get the response. Sorry about that. Thank you for coming out. Thank you. I do appreciate it. Mr. Greenwood, sorry about that.
All right. Good evening. Tonight, we'll be presenting the preliminary 2021, 22 budget. And as discussed and approved under new business, by adopting the opt-out resolution, the district has agreed not to increase taxes by more than the Act I index, which is, this year is 3%. As shared last year in, in the initial budget presentation, I shared this quote from the Chief Financial Officer for the Lancaster School District. And I find it important and impactful, particularly following Anthony's presentation and then the real connection that Dr. Bettin is building between the academic pieces and, as well as the budget, and bringing those things together. The budget's just not a collection of numbers, but it's really an expression of our values. Here's a portion of the budget timeline that was shared and approved by the board in October. Tonight, we share the proposed preliminary budget, along with the, along with adopting the opt-out resolution. Following tonight, the next formal steps will be the adoption of a proposed final budget on April 27th, and hopefully the adoption of the final budget So, to start, we're going to take a quick look at the 19, the 2019, 2020 results. Much of this was captured in Mr. Hogan's review of the audit, but we'll just quickly walk through. So, for the 12 months ending June 30th, we recognized $123,598,000 in revenue, a shortfall of just under $2 million compared to our budget. And as, that shortfall was primarily due to reduced local taxes stemming from lower interim and delinquent tax returns, as well as lower investment income when compared to the original budget. We also had lower state revenue related to plan con payments, again, as compared to the budget. As Mr. Hogan also talked about, the revenue shortfall was offset by expense reductions that were driven by management actions, as well as the COVID expense reduction. And I want to make sure that that's clear, that we were actively managing the budget. That the COVID shutdown certainly helped in some areas, but those were few and far between. Those savings, again, are shown on this slide by, by Object Code and Reason. Professional, professional services, which includes counselors, includes hearing and speech and language services through the special ed group, shows a half a million dollars of savings. That is a mix of both COVID-related, as we went into the spring, but truly an area of management from our pupil services and our special ed team in particular. Charter school tuitions, the business office, and again, the pupil services team through our registrar are really actively managing charter school registrations, unlike we have done in the past. Special ed, non-public school tuition, and this is an area within pupil services that they, again, actively manage, and keeping kids in our school, and really working hard to make that happen. And STEM, which was what was a annually increasing expense. Supplies, there's certainly some, something tied to COVID in that, as you begin to close down. And utilities and fuel transportation sort of round out this list of $2 million in expenses. So, as we move on to the proposed preliminary budget, I'm going to walk through the key revenue assumptions. The assessed valuation in this plan right now is $559 million, and is tied to the January 2nd control report issued by Bucks County. Prior to that, our previous budget assessment Prior to that, our previous budget assessment in, in June, that valuation was $558 million. So it was a bit of an uptick. Assumptions around Act 511 local taxes were based on our prior four-year average, which includes the 2021 budget year. I tried to expand that so I didn't want to overweight that one year and, and count for a greater window of time. State funding is assumed to be flat, no increase or decrease. Harrisburg did not receive any funds through the federal stimulus bill that was passed in December. And so given that and the state of our budget in Harrisburg, there is some concern that there, there could be some reduction in our state funding. But the budget, the budget as we share today includes a flat, flat revenue as well as for the federal funding. That is assumed to be flat as well. A quick look at the Act 511 local taxes and in particular, the earned income tax, right? We spent a lot of time talking about earned income tax in our budget presentations last May and into June. And we tie different indicators as part of our CEA contract to the EIT and it change over the period of time. So I wanted to pull this slide up. This chart maybe does a little too much. I try to like put a lot into it. The graph provides a historical perspective over the past two years, FY19 and FY20, with the monthly revenue shown by the bar chart and the year-to-date collections shown by the line. So the bar chart references the key on the left, the lines on the key on the right. Through December of this year, collections have been following historical trend, which is good news and wasn't anticipated. So we're hopeful that that continues because that's a true sign of, of employment and activity within our district. We do have a concern in that the EIT is a, has a lag to it. Obviously, as employers withhold and collect taxes, they have a window to submit, typically a three-month lag. But again, through December, which would have been that first quarter, we are on track with our previous, previous line. Similar to the pie chart that breaks down our 2019 and, and 2019-2020 revenue by source. This chart here provides an historical context to Centennial's revenue mix. And the local taxes in support is the overwhelming source of our, our revenue, making up consistently over the five years shown here, 74% or more of our revenue. State funding from Harrisburg contributes about 25% and federal contributions toward education are 1%. The major expense assumptions assumed in the preliminary budget include professional salaries in line with their renegotiated collective bargaining agreement, along with $75,000 for teacher column movement, which is really tied to their continuing education. An increase in the final, it includes an increase in the final year of the support staff agreement, which per that agreement is 0.39%. The Act One agreement, which ends this June, we are assuming a 1% increase to those salaries as well. We've included a 5% increase to healthcare costs. And the retirement Caesar's contribution, 34.94%. Across the operating groups, we've really held to a flat budget, trying to really make sure that we are accountable and holding to, to the expense. This chart just shows a comparison, shows a couple of things, right? This shows professional salary and benefits as calculated from the collective bargaining agreement. Total compensation and benefits are represented by the bar chart and the annual change over the prior year shown by the line. This compares the original CEA agreement approved in June of 2019 with the renegotiated CEA agreement that we agreed to last June with the board. And it shows, you know, sort of if you look at that column for 21-22, a real savings, savings of just over, just about 100, 1.3 million dollars in that negotiation that we went through with CEA and really a testament to their dedication and ongoing to managing our costs. So the, based on, on those revenue assumptions and expense assumptions, the preliminary budget shows total revenue of $124,894,95 and total expenses of $127,633,551 for an operating deficit of $3,544,056. If the full Act One increase of 3% is applied to real estate taxes, this deficit would be reduced to just, just under 1.2 million. We thought it useful and beneficial to, to sort of define what the Act One index is. So we'll take a second to do that and its impact to our budget. The Act One index is the state's measure for determining property tax increases justified by wage inflation. Each district's index is calculated separately for each fiscal year and consists of two parts, the base index and the district adjustment. Statewide base index is the average of the percentage of change in wages statewide and the percentage of changes in school employee compensation costs nationwide. Thus, the base index reflects a rough measure of the rate of change in compensation costs. And that's truly the measure that we use. We, but we refer to the base index. We don't have any further adjustments that are made. For 20, for this budget, for preliminary budget, a 1% change in real estate taxes equals $787,800 revenue. As we compare that to, to homeowners, the median home value of $301,000, that 3% equals an additional $120 in real estate tax.
I, I mean, not even a question, just more of an observation. I think, having gone through this process before, it might be useful and simple math to think of it not in terms of a 1% change, but in the terms of a 10th of a percent. In that every 10th of a percent is $78,780, which is roughly the cost of, let's say, a first-year teacher wants you hire in healthcare and all that, right? So every time you do a plus or minus 10%, a 10th of a percent, you're either adding or subtracting the possibility of hiring a low level in terms of experience. Is that about right?
That is, that is the connection. We had that conversation a year ago as well.
Thank you.
The following slide shows the projected preliminary budget compared to the current year budget in the prior three years. Also shown is the beginning and ending fund balance along with the dollar change from fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2022. And at the bottom of each column shows the fund balance as a percent of expenditures is a measure that school districts use, as well as the number of months of expenditure. For the preliminary budget, the ending fund balance is projected to be $8,217,000 or 6.4% total expenditures, which is less than a single month's worth of expense.
Can I ask a question about this graph? I'm just trying to follow. So in a budget for '21, we're projecting in the end, a deficit for the year of 1.3 and 3.5 million or so.
Yes, that was the budget.
And yet the beginning fund balance. Oh, I see. That all comes out of the fund balance. Great. Okay, that's it. Thanks. Sorry.
This chart shows the, the budget revenue by source is again consistent. And this chart shows the preliminary budget expenditures by sub-function. Expenses remain consistent with historical measures. The instruction, which is 63%, includes both regular educational education. There is an increase in support service dollars as we look to restart the vehicle replacement program that was put into effect two years ago and placed on hold with this last budget cycle. And non-instructional and debt service remain flat. The following shows, the following, this slide shows expenses by object code. Salaries and benefits and debt services, you'll notice, combined to equal 80% of the total proposed budget. The pie on the, pie chart on the right further breaks down the salary and benefits between faculty, support staff and administration, which includes both school-based and central office staff members. This chart attempts to break down the preliminary budget expenses by type or degree of flexibility. And while there's certainly some judgment in that determination, as you can see, somewhere a little closer. So, you know, 13% of the budget is truly fixed cost. And that includes debt service, includes property expenses like utilities and insurance charge. 86% is sort of in the middle. And that includes salaries, includes benefits, includes tuitions, textbooks, student activities, all of those things that we can tweak, but there's not a wholesale change to it. And, and the smallest piece is really the preliminary expenditures around supply items. Look at and, and address. On this chart, we show the non-salary and benefits expenses over the past three years and the 2021 budget and the preliminary 2022 budget expenditures. Overall, the non-salary expenses increased 1.4% compared to our 2021 budget. 2022 anticipates a reduction in our COVID-related supply expenses and an increase in our purchase services, which is primarily a non-pub vocational and charter school tuitions. The increase in property expenses, as mentioned before, is really from the restarting of our vehicle replacement program. This chart shows the out-of-district tuitions. The growth in vocational expenditures to MBIT is really primarily driven by an increase in enrollment year over year. Over the past five-year window, expenses for MBIT have increased total 32%. As discussed previously, pupil services has done a great job managing the special education and non-public tuition. The 2021-2022 expenses, I think, represent original budget requests. And we anticipate that there'll be some reduction in those as we move through this budget process. Charter school tuitions have increased 48% over that window. This is another area where we're actively trying to manage some solution. Anthony mentioned virtual academy, much, much more in line with school, which would be a source of bringing some cyber, cyber students back into the district. And sort of wrapping up the 2021-2022 budget, these are just an area of, that we are going to be looking into as we move through this process. We have, you know, staffing, departmental expenses, special education costs, tuition costs, equipment replacement, and we'll continue working through this process. Much of this is underway. Committee was formed to review the staffing needs across the district. It includes Anthony, Dennis, Melissa, Carol and myself. And this group is really working to better understand and share learnings relative to staffing structures and the impact on instructional scheduling. Well, you know, we hope to pay dividends in this year as well as into the future part of Anthony Dennis' work. As shared previously and as Anthony referred to, Forecast Five Analytics, a part of that program for the business office included a FiveCast, which provides and helps us expand our five-year planning. FiveCast really allows you to compare various scenarios very quickly, to be able to put assumptions in, to put contract terms in, and, and you're able to quickly see the effect of those changes. So while we continue to build out, this is by no chance our year plan, but rather a draft, I have a draft tonight to share that starts with the 2022 preliminary budget expenses and projected out over the next four years to 2026. The following slides will show the impact of the real estate millage on annual operations and the fund balance, with all other factors remaining. The assumptions, they cover that span. Annual assessed valuation increases of 0.09164. That's just the value of the assessment in total, which is the three-year average. A consistent net tax collection, actual funds that are being collected. Payroll expenses are mapped out based on existing agreements and historical averages going forward. Other expenses start with the 2022 preliminary budget and include some inflationary increase as warranted. And as we go through the next couple of slides, it's important to understand that all surpluses or deficits remain in the general. So as Carl had mentioned briefly, there are, school districts can, can raise money for capital funds or large maintenance issues in one of two ways. That's either money coming from the general fund that is moved over to a capital fund or the issuing of additional debt. So for this, we're going to show the fund balance with no movement in and out of. This slide provides some historical context to Centennial's annual tax rate changes over the past 10 years compared to the Act One index. For our review, we're going to share the following three scenarios. A 0% real estate tax increase over the five-year planning window. A 2.44 annual real estate tax increase over that same period, which is the Act, Act One five-year average. And a 3% annual real estate tax increase, which is in line with sort of the district's five-year average, again, over that same period. I think as John had mentioned earlier, when we were talking about the, the opt-out resolution last year was the, the, you know, second to the lowest increase and the first below the Act One in this, in this period. So we'll start using the scenario with a 0% annual increase over that five-year period. Under this scenario, the district runs five consecutive deficits as contracted expenses exceed growth in revenue impacting our financial stability. The district hit a negative fund balance in 2024. This is just a depiction of the year-ending, the year-end projected fund balance for each of those years. Assuming a 2.44% Assuming a two-point four-four percent increase, you can see a larger deficit in twenty twenty-two uh compared to our current preliminary budget, uh with operational deficit continuing into twenty twenty-three, uh but surpluses in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. Fund balance remains below the recommended threshold until twenty twenty-six, at which point it represents less than a month's worth of operating expenses. Again, the lower fund balance could impact our bond rating, does not provide any additional capital uh for emergency funding. Again, a similar slide that shows the year-end fund balances for each of those planning Using the three percent annual real estate increase, based on the uh, uh, based on the annual three percent increase, twenty twenty-two is in line with the preliminary budget and consistent financial improvement uh follows over the following four years. The fund balance in twenty twenty-five exceeds one month of operating expenses, and we could begin to transfer uh fund balance to other funds to support capital and significant maintenance uh concerns, thus allowing us to continue to provide that warm, safe and dry environment for our staff and students to work in the past to do. Again, sort of the, the fund balance at the end of each of those years without any In summary, the three scenarios provide a comparative analysis of the options. And while no one option is being sought tonight, it is important that we understand the compounding nature of rate changes on the budget. As shared at the beginning, local revenue is the leading source of revenue to the district, accounting for as much as seventy-four percent of all revenue to the district, and of that amount upwards of eighty-six percent of the local revenue comes through real estate tax. In every budget, a single decision can have far-reaching uh consequences, and at Centennial, that's no different. Historically, the district has benefited from a solid fund balance, providing lower borrowing costs and the ability to address emergencies as they arise, such as the emergency repairs at the high school, as well as challenges from the pandemic, where we're able to absorb one-point-three-million-dollar loss in the current period. My last two slides provide some historical context uh to the underfunded mandate from PDE, namely, uh, the retirement escalation, special education funding versus expenditures in charter schools, uh, are the, the three major culprit. Um, as uh Carl mentioned as well, while the PISers is, is flattening out a little bit, um, it, it has increased almost six hundred percent uh since two thousand and ten, um, and is, is gone from two-point-eight-million dollars at that point in time to almost twenty million, nineteen million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars current year. This is a challenge that all districts have been, they struggle with. This slide shows the impact of special, special education funding versus expenditures, where funding has remained flat over the past eleven years despite increased regulation and requirements for special education. The underfunder, under, underfunded mandates of retirement, special education, charter schools continue to place strains on school districts and our local residents. And with that, include the uh preliminary budget presentation.
Thank you. Did anybody have?
Um, I know it's probably too early to tell, but I heard some whispers that based on what we were seeing, I guess, at the end of last fiscal year, and even from tax receipts over the final quarter, uh, that was in the COVID period, you know, we were anticipating a certain hit to the earned income tax receipt. Are we seeing any, I mean, is that going to come out? Is there any sense of whether that's coming out better or worse?
That, that is uh touched on that here.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
That's quite all right. Right? So, uh, this slide shows, um, if you start looking at the fight, that the darkest column to the right is our uh collected this year earned income tax, um, and the line. You'll see that year-to-date, we're very close uh to our, you know, prior two years of uh, of uh collection. The EIT seems to be at this point holding, um, you know, we'll continue to, we'll continue to monitor that, that through December, which would really be sort of that, that our first quarter, if you will, of.
Sure. I mean, the reason I asked the question, I'm sorry, I, I somehow blanked on that slide, is because, uh, we must recall as the board that when we negotiated with PDA, uh, it was, one of the predicates of that was that if the earned income tax over, uh, what we were projecting, then they would get some of what they gave back over this COVID year uh back on the back end.
In their fifth year.
And it looks like that's going to happen, which, good for the teachers. I'm glad, right? Because it looks like we're.
Uh, I, I think that would be bullish at the moment, Dixon, right? But uh, I'm, I'm sorry, my nature, my friend, I'm conservative by nature.
Allow me to rephrase. It seems entirely within the realm of possibility that that will happen, and therefore we must plan accordingly, which I've just, you know, saying that now, that, you know, that, that Act One number is what it is for a reason. And I know nobody likes what the Act One number is, but you're playing with a loaded gun if you try to come underneath that number on any kind of consistent.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Well, you know, following up on what Andrew just mentioned, you know, the three percent is what we just approved tonight, so we can't go over that, and we're still missing almost a whole percent, you know, in, in terms of meeting the goals. So, we have one-point-one-million or more that we need to find beyond the three percent that we're already increasing. So that's going to be a major challenge for us. Uh, we know for sure, we can't do anything about the PISers, so that that's going to, you know, kind of point us towards special ed, you know, in the most likely scenario to try to find money there. Um, and I know, you know, Ms. Bolden has worked very hard on bringing students back and and getting things under control there. Um, but, you know, where are, what are we gonna do in order to find that kind of money?
You are correct, Jonathan. A lot of work to be done, and a lot of difficult decisions that will be presented uh to you uh as we move forward, right? And I think that's the important aspect, and certainly an important learning for me uh in my, uh, my time here, is to present you with the options. Um, as I said, there are, there are items in here that we think we can attack, but again, uh, before I, I work to try to make that happen, I really want to put that uh to you uh as a board, and you guys can uh, you'll weigh in and and provide uh us and provide uh the district direction.
So, Goddickson, to follow up before you ask another question, and I'm glad he noticed that and picked up on it, because it was very important to see that, that even if you did Act One, we were already in a deficit model. So one of the things that your point is, we absolutely are uh looking at um, uh, special ed uh options there. We're also looking at uh staffing, uh, and trying to do it better, which is why we're looking at making sure we start with adhering to what was outlined in policy about what staffs look like for that process. We're spending a, a lot of time uh trying to educate even our building leaders on every time you ask for something, uh, you know, where's the trade-off, because there's not a, a, a opportunity for new money because of the one-point-one-million that we're already starting with. So all those things are being looked at as, as part of how do we try to close that gap? We know no matter what, what this said and going through this process is what you just pointed out. Before anything else, we know that even if you did it, we got a one-point-three, was it one-point-three, I think, something like that, uh, million shortfall that we're already trying to work on. We know at minimum, we got to find that to start with, uh, to come in. What you also should know is that it's, Mr. Dixon pointed it out, every time you do go below the Act One index, you have a compounding effect of your deficit the next year. So when you go below it, and then you fund it with your fund balance, you've, you've passed a structurally deficient budget. You're living off your savings account, but then that compounds the next year on top of it, which is why in one of the projections, you'll see that, um, even when we, you'll see the first year uh being steady and then projected, and then the next year, the deficit is bigger, and then it finally starts catching up, because you start compounding on doing the Act One and that three-point-O model to help you catch up, um, which we thought was also important, let you see the impact, which was a ten dollars, basically, I think, per month on average house value. Um, and I thought, you know, it was important to understand that we answer to taxpayers because of this uh challenge. That's why the front part was important. What are we doing to give better outcomes for the money they're paying too, which is why we thought that was important to show, uh, because it is a challenge right off the bat we're facing uh from the get-go. And eighty percent of our cost is debt service and salary and benefits. So, um, things like attrition and whether or not we can do it differently and not replace positions when people leave and those types of things, uh, one of the strategies we put before the board, uh, with uh, trying to address that that we talked about earlier, was why we put that out there, um, because that's our biggest cost factor. Uh, that's our most valuable asset too, so we want to be clear about that, which is what we want to make sure. Uh, so we try to address that in the least challenging and conflicting manner, because that's where our biggest cost is. And we wanted to make sure that people saw how that breaks out, because you even heard a public constituent uh reference administration, but you see really six percent. I literally could wipe out all administration and wouldn't, wouldn't even put a dent in the budget deficit, but people have this perception that it's a lot of money.
I just wanted to make a comment, um, that when, I, I know it's perceived because the taxes are coming in, um, but a lot of people have their taxes escrowed. I'm not saying that we, we do have to find the money, but a lot of people have their taxes escrowed, because even if you're not paying your mortgage, your mortgage company is paying your taxes. So let's not just, let's not dwell on the fact, and let's not think that because the taxes are being paid, that our community is thriving, because it's not. So let's just make that crystal clear right now. We have to do the absolute best we can to keep it down under three percent, and I know that no one wants to hear that, but the community is struggling. You see those food lines, um, let's not, let's not kid ourselves that, you know, because the taxes are coming in, again, the mortgage company is responsible for paying those taxes, whether you're paying your mortgage or not. So let's not think that they have funds that they can, we really just have to work with um, the community and what they have. And I, I, I know that nobody wants to hear that, um, but we really, we really do have to do that.
Madam Chair, that's why we thought it was important to give you the three models, uh, so you can see, because again, the key is whatever decision you make is not really just for that year. It has multi-year impact. Uh, I do want to make sure that you, uh, that's important for you to your point. There's one, the real estate tax is one portion. That's why paying attention to while we're watching EIT, because the EIT would then indicate, are people still working and making money? So that's going to be a big key to your point. Real estate is holding steady, but then we have to look at the EIT, which is a better indicator of whether people are employed and, and actually, uh, you know, producing revenue to your point about how's it going. But we again wanted to do three models, because approach here was, we didn't want to come to the board and say, this is your one choice and that's it. That's why we did the zero and then the two-point-four, which was an average, because rather than, so people say, where'd you pick that number from? Well, here's how we got that number, and then the three percent, so you can see what that looks like, um, so the board can, and it's going to be important that the board start looking at this after this meeting and really think about, you know, because it may mean some tough choices, because you, to Mr. uh, Goddickson's comment that even with it, we already got a deficit. So the farther you go down, that deficit is bigger. That means that we're going to have to make some tough choices then about our educational program.
Mr. Panofsky? Um, okay. So, first of all, I agree about that, because you know, everybody, you know, it was last year, I was probably one of the last to sign on to any. Um, I'm going to change the topic slightly and say that it is nine-thirty. Haven't even started voting portion of our agenda at this point. I would respectfully suggest to my colleagues that this, the budget is something we're going to be going over time and time and time and time and time again. This is not the only chance we have to talk about it. I am, I'm, I would suggest that further comments or questions be put into writing or just for meeting, so we can get on to the voting part of the agenda before the business end of day, which we have to do in the next. So, that's my own.
I, I would like to say one last thing, because I was starting, and I was happy to, uh, but just to say to Mr. Goddickson's point, which is, was perfectly legitimate and fine, I, the thing about the one-point-three-million-dollar deficit that we're running this year and the, and the, the uh fund balance is that we were able to absorb it because in previous years, we were always hitting Act One. And in fact, the, the first year I was on the board, I think we were over Act One by quite a bit, actually. As soon as you don't hit Act One, I mean, it, it, it mounts so fast, and that's, you know, but you're right, Mr. Panofsky, we can discuss this another day, but it's a loaded
Mr. Goddickson? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, just a quick comment, you know, that, I appreciate the amount of work that went into this, and, you know, as, as Mr. Panofsky says, we're, we're just at the beginning of this. I, I'm scared of what the governor's going to say on Tuesday, and we may be having a whole new conversation here. So, you know, hang, hang in here, this is going to be a long haul.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Goddickson?
Thank you. Um, I am going to start with dedication on a pool of pupil service committee. We have no inf, none in terms of information. Under four-point-two, I don't know if there's anybody who wants to pull any of those items. If not. Be resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, four-point-two-A, accepts the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Special Education Scares Act, G E E R Project Award, Special Education COVID-nineteen Impact Mitigation Grant. Grant amount is eighteen thousand, six hun, six hundred and nine dollars. Four-point-two-B, accepted two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty continuity education grant, grant amount is one hundred thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars. Four-point-two-C approves the request for the Centennial School District and the Bucks County Intermediate Unit to enter into a use of funds agreement for implementation of individuals with Disability Education Act Part B, IDEA, Section six-one-nine, award in the amount of three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for the twenty twenty-one school year. Four-point-two-D approves the exceptions to Policy two-oh-two eligibility for non-resident students and Policy two-oh-six assignment within the district to allow student nineteen dash nineteen to complete senior year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one at William Kennedy High School without payment of tuition. Parents will provide transportation. Four-point-two-E denies the request for the exceptions to Policy two-oh-two eligibility of non-resident student, of student twenty dash four to complete the twenty twenty-one school year at McDonald Elementary School without payment of tuition. The family is moving out of the district on February twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. Four-point-two-F denies the request for the exception to Policy two-oh-two eligibility of non-resident student for students four-one, nine-one, seventeen-one, twelve-one and twelve-one a second time to attend Centennial Schools for the remainder of the twenty twenty-one school year without payment of tuition. The family has moved out of the district. Second. Any discussions? Or for a vote? Approved?
Robach, we get a vote?
I think we can do this as a voice.
Yeah, I think so too. I'm in favor.
Yeah, that's what I call for. Eyes. Yes. Any abstentions? There is nine-point-nine-O.
There's 9.90.
Finance, Mr. Burdick?
Yes. First, with the monthly report from our primary deposit board, concerning full disclosure of assets. And then, there are five, two, we have three act items, and we just discussed them briefly. We have two settlements in the district's favor regarding practice deals. The board will recall that we started a process a few years ago that continues to bear fruit. The third act item is the required acceptance of the annual audit report. Would anyone like any of those items pulled? If not, I'll continue on. 5.2A approves management council's complete stipulation as provided to the board regarding Doc. Number 2007435 and 201807499. 5.2C approves management and council's complete stipulation as provided to the board regarding Doc. Number 20807433. And finally, 5.2C accepts the annual financial report for year ended June 30, 2020. Is there any discussion?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Nope.
If not, take a voice vote. That was a client base one. All in, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any? Any abstentions? The most passed here. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Okay. It's not that we don't have any information, Mr. Wardenby doesn't need to share any tonight. So we'll move right into the two resolutions. Mr. Panofsky, I know we tried to put this back into order, but apparently Mr. Goddickson did get the memo, and Mr. Burdick's just a natural orator. But Mrs. Berncotto, if you wouldn't mind making the two resolutions? Would you mind reading the two resolutions?
6.2.
Oh, excuse me. Does anybody want to pull either resolution? Okay, please proceed.
Items presented for approval tonight, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.2A, approves a 50% reduction of fees request for transportation for Upper Southampton Parks and Recreation for their field trips during their summer camp program from June 2021 through August 2021. District costs not to exceed $1,774.61. Upper Southampton Parks and Recreation will follow Centennial School District and Bucks County COVID-19 guidelines regarding physical distancing, group size, and PPE. 6.2B approves the facility use request for Fox Chase Cancer Center and the Teen Research Internship Program at William Tennet High School on Saturdays from January 30, 2021 through April 17, 2021, no cost to the district. Fox Chase Cancer Center will follow Centennial School District and Bucks County COVID-19 guidelines regarding physical distancing, group size, and PPE.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion? I had one quick question, Mr. Wardenby. The 1,774.61, is that an actual cost to the district or is that the amount that we're waiving? Okay, any, no further discussion? All those in favor, please, in the paper, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Nine, zero.
Thank you. The next meeting of the Committee of the Whole will be held Tuesday, February 23, 2021. I'm kind of motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, have a good night.
Aye.